Morning, everyone. Thank you for coming this morning. We'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As people can see, we're trying a new, a new method of having remote attendance by some of our commissioners. And we'll have some presenters this morning that will also be presenting on Zoom. And so it's, technology is a wonderful thing and allows us to keep functioning and to stay in touch even in these unusual times. So with that, I want to remind you that meeting documents are available for review down next to Commissioner Heiburger. Please silence your cell phones and Carol is here if you need a listening device. I consider a motion to approve our agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second. Benega?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Roll call vote. Roll call. That's my bad. Roll call vote, Olivia. Sorry.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is approve the meeting minutes. First, we'll approve the meeting minutes for the commission meeting on April 28th, 2020.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, I'd consider a motion to approve the special commission meeting on May 6th, 2020.
So moved. Second?
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $1,148,098.72.
Pay the bills.
Second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Commissioner Benega mentioned he saw, he read all of the bills on his cellphone, so I think he should get extra credit points this week. All right. No comments?
None.
So now I've lost track. Was there a motion?
Yep.
Okay, motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, we have a number of reports today. We have the auditor's account with the county treasurer for March 2020, Minnehaha County Sheriff's report, highway department, a monthly construction project update, mobile crisis team statistics. All of those have great information in them. Next item is the auditor's financial report. Is Kim? Is Kim? Oh, hey, there's Kim, live and in person. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. Kim Adamson from the auditor's office. We have for you today the April financial results. We'll start with the general fund cash reserve. That stands at $21.7 million at the end of April, about $2 million ahead of April of 2019. The next graph is our highway fund cash reserve, cash at $9.9 million at the end of April, about $1.4 million below last year. Then we can move to our year-to-date expenditures. Our year-to-date expenditures are running lower than last year as a percentage of budget. We're at 31.8% year-to-date. Salaries and benefits are at 32.7% of budget. Also, that is lower than budget last year. That's primarily due to, we had a number of positions that are budgeted for mid-year or late-year hires in 2020. And so we'll see our payrolls probably continue to run below budget until we start filling those positions in the latter part of the year. Other expenses also are at 30% year-to-date as a percentage of budget. That compares to 31.1% last year. And lastly, if we look at our revenues. Do you want to pull up? Trish, can I have you advance to that revenue graph, please? Thank you. Our year-to-date revenues stand at $24.4 million. That's 38.4% of our budgeted revenue. If you scroll down to property taxes, that's where the majority of our revenues occur. We're at $19.2 million, which is 41.2% of revenue. That's about 2.6% below last year at this time. I do have some information through May 8th. If you remember, on April 30th, we typically have a backlog of mailed-in payments, and that was even greater so because of our building not being open to take payments at the treasurer's office in person. So if we look at May, May of 2019, we had gross property tax collections of $27 million. For the, that's for the entire month of May 2019. Through May 8th of 2020, we've already posted $28.7 million of property tax collections, and we've still got three weeks of payments to go in. So we are expecting that we will kind of close that gap, and we should easily be at that 52%, 53% of property tax collections by the end of May.
Good news. Are there questions for Kim? These reports are really helpful. They're very thorough. It's really, we really appreciate you getting us the update too on the, through May, because that really paints a little different picture.
Well, I know it's, everybody's kind of on pins and needles to see where things are coming in, and they are coming in as scheduled, so that is good news.
Okay. Thank you very much. The next item are personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second?
Motion and a second. All right, roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. And we have Commissioner Karski.
And I didn't get the reports, the financial reports for the routine personnel action on, you either?
I didn't get any of that stuff.
Yeah, I started looking at my iPad. For some reason, not all of the reports got loaded onto the computers that the commissioners are using.
And none of Carrie's stuff is there either. Now, of course, I've messed it up and don't have anything, so.
So my question, I guess, since Carrie's there, I did look at all this stuff yesterday. And it seemed like there, this is going back to what Kim had reported on new hires. It seems like we do have a good number of new hires. Have we already started that process?
For, we have started it for the correctional officers in the jail. And then we have a couple of mid-hires over the summer, and then we have another group of correctional officers, which were approved, I believe, September or October. So we've started some hiring. You might remember from having looked at the memo that there's a lot of new hires on this week's. Most of those are variable hour staff. We have a number of people who work on our emergency volunteer group, who have agreed to help out on a part-time basis in our jail if we have staffing needs. So that's the majority of what you were seeing this week.
Thank you.
And there shouldn't be that many changes since the last time you saw that. We did add on our Four Parks people, who are going to be starting and working for Scott. That's the majority of the changes. So with that, I can try and run you off a hard copy and circulate that if you like, or?
No, it was on Dropbox.
It was on Dropbox, but it just didn't get loaded on our computers this morning for some reason.
Okay, sounds good. Okay. I have two items for you. One is to recognize significant employee anniversaries for May. We have Kelly Peterson, who's a victim witness assistant in the state's attorney's office, Candace Still, who's a tax and license technician for the treasurer's office, Scott Graff, who's a senior tax and license technician in the treasurer's office, and Brianna, just shock, I'm hoping Brianna, that I'm not mutilating your name too badly there, who is a museum aide at the museum, all celebrating five years of service. We have Tom Hensley, who's celebrating a return anniversary of 10 years of service, and Tom is our chief criminal deputy states attorney. Excuse me. We have Monica Hunkamp, who's a senior property tech, an equalization, celebrating 10 years of service. And we have Captain Mike Walsh in the sheriff's office, celebrating 25 years of service. And I see that we have Captain Walsh with us, and I'm going to encourage him to say a few words.
For coming this morning.
Mike Walsh, sheriff's office. You know, this isn't something I would normally do, but as I'm getting toward the latter end of my career, what I'm realizing is I'm appreciating everyone that's had a hand in my career. And I got promoted about four and a half years ago, and I've had the opportunity to come before you guys a number of times. And I just want you guys to know how much I appreciate you putting up with me coming up here and rambling on at times, a little bit similar to what I'm doing right now. It's 25 years. It's been a lot of fun. I've got to see the entire campus grow. When I first started, it was the PSB in this building. And now we've got, I don't know, five or six additional buildings with additions onto those buildings. It's been amazing, 25 years. But primarily, I want you to know how much I appreciate the work I've been able to do with you guys. You've made my job a whole lot easier, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Commissioner Heiburger?
I'm just wondering how in the world you've been here 25 years when you're only 30?
I appreciate that, and flattery will get you everywhere, so yes, I encourage that. I don't know. Maybe it's a testament to how much I enjoy being here is when you're happy with your job, I think it definitely reflects in your lifestyle and your life, so maybe that's it. I don't know. I still have all this, and it's predominantly brown, so I'll take it. Yep, but thank you.
Well, I would say you, among many of your coworkers, are really great examples of reasons people should be involved in law enforcement. I didn't grow up with family members in law enforcement, didn't know a lot of law enforcement people personally. And it's been a great privilege for me to get to know you and many others over there. And I would strongly encourage anybody who's looking at career opportunities to really think about law enforcement. It's a great group of people who care about each other and who really care about professionalism and care about the people they serve. And you are a good example of that, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that, ma'am. I had no intention of getting into law enforcement, I'll tell you that. Growing up where I did, it was, it wasn't on the radar, let's just put it that way. And then moving here and just kind of fell into it, and I love it. I love it. Every day, I get to put on a uniform, come to work, and it's just fun. And I get to work with people like you and people over in the sheriff's office, and they've had, they've all had such a great influence on me, and I can't say enough good things about everyone I get to work with, including some of the people over here, too, so.
So that accent isn't South Dakota?
Strangely enough, no, it isn't, but I don't have an accent. You have.
Well, congratulations. Thank you. All right, another impressive group you get to recognize now.
Along with our great employees, we also have many, many great volunteers. Our numbers are slightly down for last month, but still 250 people who are coming to campus and helping us out in many, many different departments. So again, our gratitude to them.
Absolutely. And numbers being down in this environment, I think it's amazing. We still have people who are out and about volunteering in this COVID environment, so thank you to all of them.
Thank you.
All right. So that takes us to item six. Got a list of abatements for approval. Good morning, Chris.
Good morning. Chris Lilla, Equalization. Yeah, before you, today we have quite a few abatements. The majority of those are for veterans' abatements. I don't know if you, they're all pretty much the same, other than the last abatement. So I'll just read these off. Parcel number 45293, it's a veteran's exemption for 2018 in the amount of $95.18. Parcel number 45293, again, for the 2019 abatement in the amount of $1,528.55. Parcel number 75025, for the 2019 property taxes in the amount of $1,528.55. Parcel number 37720, for the 2019 property tax in the amount of $1,281.49. Parcel number 55583, 2019 property tax in the amount of $1,026.03. Parcel 48529, for the 2019 property tax in the amount of $1,398.75. Parcel number 69718, for the 2018 property tax in the amount of $913.23. Also for that same parcel number, 69718, for the 2019 property tax in the amount of $1,581.63. Then to parcel number 69866, for the 2019 property tax in the amount of $1,306.01. Parcel number 49142, for the 2018 property tax in the amount of $504.07. Again, for that same parcel, for the 2019 property tax in the amount of $1,528.56. Then on to parcel 67001, for the 2018 property tax for $128.07. Again, for that parcel, but now for the 2019 property tax in the amount of $1,528.58. Then parcel 65341, for the 2018 property tax for $134.45. And then moving on to the same parcel number for 2019 in the amount of $1,572.34. And then parcel 35328, for the 2018 property tax for $98. And then again, for 35328, but for 2019 property tax in the amount of $1,033.10. All of these are veterans that have made application, that per their application and their rating of permanent and totally disabled veterans from the VA have all qualified, and we recommend approval.
That's quite a list. Any questions for Chris? Now they entertain a motion.
Commissioner, I have a question for Chris.
Okay, go ahead.
Chris, are these the kind of thing that you have to apply for? Or do we just suddenly discover that, two years ago, that they owned this property? And they don't have to reapply or anything, right? They, not like the elderly freeze. Once you get this, you keep it, right?
That is correct, yes. There is an application that is required. A lot of these, the reason for the abatements is we base our abatements off of the VA designation. And the VA, a lot of times, operates retroactively. So, you know, a veteran may have been, been receiving some compensation or been rated maybe 80% or 90%, or even paid at 100%, but not considered to be permanent in total. And then you move forward a year or two years, and then the VA finally makes a decision that that veteran is permanent in total, related to service-connected disability, retroactively. So they will go back and say, as of 2018, on this date is when this individual actually was permanent in total, disabled, but we didn't actually approve him until now. That's where a lot of these abatements come into play. But yes, they are a one-time application. Once they're permanent in total, it's never reversed. They never have to apply again.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve?
The motion? Is there a second?
Second. Benega?
All right, motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to R, S, and T.
Yep, these are all for the same parcel number, 19573, for the 2017, 2018, and 2019 years. 2017, we're asking for 16470, for 2018, 16777, and for 2019, 18236. The issue with this parcel is there's a piece of land that, that used to be two parcels that were merged together. And somehow, some way, some form, when these two parcels got put together, the acres were put in incorrectly. We were valuing this individual for 95 acres, when in fact, he had 77.6 acres, I believe. So we are recommending correcting that and abating those taxes. It's a minimal amount of taxes, due to the fact that this happens to be agricultural land.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
One last thing, if you'll notice on all the abatements now, we've finally figured out, Jean, you had brought to my attention before, the documents that you get, that some of the comments were different, at a different time when we were doing our elderly freeze. It's been a long process, but we finally figured out the what, the why, the where, and how that's occurring. We've made software corrections within the parcel manager program, so now, all of the narrative for the reasons that should replace the memo. So on your sheets now, for every abatement, you will see, see the reasonings.
Thank you. So that's the same information that you have on your end, so we're all looking at the same thing?
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right, we get to see you a little bit later as well, so. All right, so that takes us to item seven, which is to authorize the auditor to publish a notice of hearing on June 9th, 2020, for a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license application, submitted by CC&amp;F Retail, Inc. Olivia.
So CC&amp;F Retail, Inc. did receive a violation in the current licensing year, so in order to renew their license, it does require a public hearing. So this is just to set the public hearing date for June 9th.
Any questions?
To approve, set the hearing date?
Motion?
Second.
And a second. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. So that takes us to item B, which is similar. Authorize the auditor to publish a notice of a hearing, also on June 9th, for a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license application, submitted by 38 Roadhouse.
Yes, this is the same situation. 38 Roadhouse also had a violation in the licensing year, so they require a public hearing in order to renew.
Commissioner Karski?
Just to comment on these, both this one and the prior one. They would have received a pass had they not had a violation. And they're getting special attention because they did have a violation. Are they under notice that they, probably be a good idea to come and tell us what they're doing to prevent violations like this from happening in the future? Have they been communicated with at all?
Right. So these violations took place in November, and at that time, they were sent notices, letting them know of the violation, the fact that a public hearing would be needed in the spring when the renewal comes up, and kind of what that means for them. Because of COVID and all of that, I wasn't entirely sure if they would feel comfortable physically being here. So I figured when the public hearing comes, they would have the option, depending on where we're at, of doing like the Zoom, or physically coming if they so choose. One of them did call me and ask me about it, and we, it was Mr., I'm going to butcher his name, I believe it's Winklepleck, with 38 Roadhouse. He did call me and ask me somewhat about it, and so they are aware, and they're trying to make changes.
If I may, I mean, even if it's a written communication, hey, we know this happened. These are the steps we've done to prevent it from happening. I mean, something, so that we know it's received the attention. If they can't show up, or they don't want to show up, I get that. But I would like to hear something from them.
Yeah. Yeah, I can certainly notify them.
Thank you.
Commissioner Heiburger?
You know, in all the years I've been sitting up here, I think we've only had one. I believe that's correct, that we've only had one. And I know that that particular bar owners, they came, and we had quite the long, lively discussion with that group of people. But I think we've only done one in, you know, in 11 years, which I think is pretty remarkable, so.
We don't have very many, that's true.
And we want to keep it that way.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So I'd consider, if there's any other discussion? Now I'm looking for a motion.
Move to approve the data hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Olivia. All right, so it takes item eight, planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item nine, petition for compromise of lien, there are none. So this is our opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here today for public comment? Seeing none. It takes us to regular business. And our emergency manager, Jason Gierman, is right on cue with our COVID-19 update. Good morning.
Jason Gierman, Minnehaha County Emergency Manager. Start with, we were, to start with, we were here a couple of weeks ago, referenced the burn ban. And, you know, I had weather information that, you know, we were going through a dry spell. And of course, we enacted the burn ban, and it rained a couple of days afterwards. So it has expired. And just to let you know, I did have probably a half dozen inquiries as to, just some questions about the burn ban and when could people burn. And I think overall, people complied with it, and it wasn't, wasn't a big issue. And now, with the weather that we've been having, I think it'll put a lot of ease in the fire departments. And there was no, it didn't appear to be any interest from the fire departments to continue it. So it's expired. Reference to COVID, I don't have a lot of updated information. There just, it's been kind of quiet lately. As you recall, the end of last week, there was a spike in cases, but that was due to the increased testing that was done over by the Washington High School area. Other than that, things continue to decrease. And I know that businesses have opened up over the weekend with certain restrictions. So it'll be interesting to see what happens in the next seven to 10 days with all those people. If there's an increase or not, you know, we don't know. But that's going to be something that we'll keep an eye on for future reference, to see how we should proceed again in the next seven to 10 days. So if there's any questions from you guys, I'll try and answer them. But other than that, it's been just kind of slowing down a little bit for me personally. The city is still working on some contracts and things like that, and they've got most of them ironed out. But things are going fairly smooth right now.
Hospitalizations seem to have stayed fairly level. Would that be your?
Yeah, that seems to be, you know, the marker that, that the hospitals are looking at. Because testing is so, you know, if they do 100 tests, you know, you're going to get more, more cases, obviously. So they really look close at the hospital rates. To see if, if they start to spike, then we may have a problem, but they haven't seen that yet.
I mean, I know that the goal all along here was not necessarily that we were going to keep people from testing positive, but it was to make sure that we had hospital capacity to handle and provide adequate care to those who needed hospitalization. And it, while we have seen a spike in some, in the positive numbers due to the increased testing, the hospitals still remain very confident that they can handle the surge, which is still estimated for the end of this month, first part of June.
Yeah, and, you know, we still got to caution people that, you know, there's a reason it's just partially open. It's got to be a gradual transition, so that we don't wreck what we've already done. And, you know, the people that have sacrificed jobs and being able to go out and do the things they want to do, just keep working at what you're doing. They're doing a great job, but we don't want to go out and destroy what you've done by not abiding with what the recommendations are. I think we'll know a lot more in the next, again, seven to 10 days, and see where we're at, and maybe adjust it again.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Is the governor's order for the over 65 expired? I've definitely had a lot of questions about that confusion about what happened there, so.
Yes, it did expire. I think it expired yesterday.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well.
Yeah, and there was caution from her office, too, on that. You know, you still, you're still not out of danger yet, being within that age, with the health risk that you may have. So it's lifted, but you've still got to be cautious.
And you didn't receive any complaints over the weekend, as the businesses reopened on a limited basis in compliance with our resolution that we enacted last week?
I haven't heard of anything. I haven't been in contact with the sheriff yet, but I haven't heard of any complaints or any issues. I know I talked to one of the Sioux Falls police captains, who advised that their call volume was up a little bit, but that's to be expected.
All right, well, I appreciate you coming and all the work and the resources that you provide to us on a daily basis to help us to continue to monitor the situation. You know, as you said, while we've opened things up a little bit on a limited basis, that doesn't do away with any of the social distancing requirements, or the hygiene, good hygiene requirements. And, you know, while I think a few people were out last weekend, a lot of people just personally decided that they are more comfortable staying at home for a longer period of time, and particularly those. that they are more comfortable staying at home for a longer period of time, and particularly those vulnerable populations. And we would continue to strongly encourage that, you know, for, for the next few weeks, for sure, as we see how the testing goes. Yes, Commissioner.
I guess I'd like to ask Jason a question. You know, they say we have three thousand tests a day available in South Dakota. Why aren't we using them? I don't understand why we put people in confinement in our jail and stuff and do not test them. I don't know why we're not already testing teachers who are going to be going back to the classroom. If we have three thousand tests a day, is it because we want to hide the actual number of people that are ill? Or is it because we actually don't have three thousand tests a day? And I, I think we need to, especially our jail, when we put people in that close confinement, we should know who's got it and who doesn't. And I guess that's sort of my question and my comment to Jason.
Well, the, the testing is basically kind of run by the Department of Health. As far as the jail is concerned, you know, and public safety in general with law enforcement and, and the nurses and the critical infrastructure. I think there will be a push in the future maybe to maybe test that group more often. But if you go back to the jail, you know, there's fifty to seventy-five people that come in and out of that jail every day. And, you know, he may not, somebody may not have it when they come into jail and two days later they do have it. So testing, although it, it shows the numbers. If we increase testing, obviously, we're gonna increase the amount of people with the COVID. We just saw that late last week with the increased testing there. So, you know, I think that, that's something for the future. And as far as the three thousand tests, I, I haven't heard that yet. I don't have a specific number. But there are, if somebody wants to be tested and they're symptomatic and the doctor says, yes, go get a test, they generally get a test. So they, they do get tested.
And I would say that I know the jail has taken lots of action to protect the folks there and actually have really seen the tide turn a little bit. They had a, a unit that was fully open last night because everybody in it had been fully quarantined and, and were now, were now clear. And they had some issues with some positives in their employees, but quite a few of those employees are now back at work. But they continue to take it very seriously. They screen everyone twice a day and are taking temperatures. And if, if anybody shows any symptoms, then they, they are tested.
Yeah, and with the jail, it wasn't a matter of if, it was when. So it was gonna happen. But the, the, the restrictions they put on early in the, in this, I think really helped, helped with the situation they're in now. And, you know, hopefully this doesn't spike again. And even with the homeless population, you know, numbers seem to be declining gradually. But it's something that you really have to keep an eye on to make sure that, that those people are being taken care of. Because they could really cause problems within the health system and within the jail if, if that number spikes, so.
Other questions?
Madam Chair, if I might?
Yes, Commissioner Benega.
There's a, a few questions that occasionally come up in the community. And the mayor has been proactive in setting up a committee that will come out to review your policies and procedures before you open, if you would like. That's a free service. He has assigned that to the Director of Community Development, and that's Jeff Eckhoff. And they've done an outstanding job at helping people with recommendations if people have questions before they open their business and go either part-time or full-time. And I think it's a service that is frankly needed in the community. And I'm happy that that proactive activity has happened. So I'd highly recommend that people that have that question about certain things, give them a call to make sure they're doing the right thing.
Yeah, and I would say that they've also been very gracious to be available to folks outside the city limits. Last week, Kara Muller, our administrative chair, and I were on a call with Wild Water West, and Jeff Eckhoff participated in that call. We had a real good discussion about the plans that they have for trying to reopen and all the steps that they are taking to ensure social distancing and for sanitation. And Jeff was very helpful for that. So just because you're outside the city limits, but if you're, you know, in Minnehaw County and Lincoln County, I think that they are available and the state has some similar resources available that we can put people in touch with. Good point. Thank you for bringing that up. Along those lines, I would also like to say, you know, right now, the county administrative building and the county museums are closed to the public. And we are, we are actively working hard on a plan to reopen, at least in a limited basis, to the public. I know the city is opening on a limited basis to the public next week. We will not be opening next week. I don't think we'll be in a position to open next week. But we are working hard. We have a meeting set with department heads for the end of this week to make sure that we've adequately communicated with them and to have them actually submit plans for their individual department. We have a lot of people who run very different lines of service. And so we will be working with them and trying to finalize that next week and get the commissioner's information about that. And if, if we can get everything lined up, we'll try to open the day after Memorial Day. And if we don't, then we will open as it originally been noticed for the first day of June. Okay? Any questions on that? All right, thank you very much for coming over. I appreciate it. All right. Okay. So that takes us to item eleven, which is a presentation from Chris Lilla. Good morning, again.
Good morning, Chris Lilla, again, equalization. I just want to thank the commission for the opportunity to kind, to kind of explain what our office does and some of the things that we have, we have taken on this, this past year. So we've put together a brief PowerPoint here. The first slide that we put together is our oath. This is an oath that we're required to take. And I just want you to know that we do take this oath very seriously. That we do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and that I will faithfully and partially and honestly discharge the duties of my office, particularly that I will assess all property assessed by me at its true cash value according to the best of my knowledge and judgment. So help me God, you know, and that is what our job is. Our job is equalization. Our job is fair and accurate and equal assessment so that the tax burdens to the public is uniform and equitable. Some of the things that we do is we maintain and update county property data. We assess all real estate for property taxes. That includes trailer houses, residential, commercial, agricultural, any property within Minnehaw County boundaries that has value. We assess that and our, again, our mission is to assess that fairly and equally. We track and record all sales data. We establish all growth. The growth is very important for the county, for the cities, for the townships. That is a major function of our office. Anytime something new is built, we capture that growth and record that growth. That is what all taxing districts are able to increase their budget request on. So again, very important. We track all, all TIF increment value as well as the base. We administer all the exemption programs. We assist in planning and development for future projects. We also handle reappraisals. Minnehaw County is the largest county in the state. We've got per census, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixteen people. We are growing. We are just over seventy-three thousand, five hundred parcels. I don't have the exact number today, but that number changes daily with our consolidations and combinations of properties as well as new plating. So that number goes up, it goes down, but we are growing. For each property that, that we assess, we do have a detailed work file that's updated anytime a change is made. Anytime there's a building permit taken out, a basement finish added, you know, we maintain and record all of that data. Some of the information that we record is our, our parcel identification number or map ID number. Again, the current property information and property history, all sales, sketches, property value history and taxes, all the program for applications that owner occupies, elderly frees, tax exempts, veterans exempts. The list is pretty lengthy. Also photos, our photos right now are, a lot of our photos are outdated. And that's because there hasn't been a physical review for twenty years. So as we begin our physical review next summer, all properties will have updated photos. We also maintain inspection notes. That's the appraiser's work history, if you will, of what they did, why they were there, what they concluded. Next slide is our sales. You can see our sales remain fairly consistent over the past few years of about seven thousand per year. Now, there's something to note with the sales. That is transfers. We have to account for all transfers. We don't get to use all sales in our market analysis. So we have seven thousand transfers. So if a husband puts a wife's name on the deed or things like that, that's a transfer. We can't use that. That's a rejected transfer for our purposes. We, we average about thirty-five hundred to thirty-six hundred good sales. So that's the, that's the sales that are really important to my office. Those are the ones that we analyze to determine, do we need to increase this area? Do we need to decrease this area? Or is there no change in market valuation to this area? We continue to, to record all those sales, analyze those, trend them, and determine what our, what our ratios are and what changes need to occur for the next tax year, thus your assessment notice. Again, we're retroactive. We can't forecast the market. We can only react to it. Just some information for this past year. Each property has a specific valuation in relation to its real property characteristics and/or land. Again, if your house is bigger than your neighbors and it's a higher quality than your neighbors, your house probably should be valued higher than your neighbors. That's what our job is. Every house is different. Every house has unique characteristics, whether it be size, the way it's built, the materials that were utilized, its location. So we try and analyze all of that data to determine the, the correct values. For two thousand and nineteen and market sales to determine our two thousand and twenty assessments, we started at a level of eighty-five point eight percent. Again, we'd like to target ninety to ninety-four. I always say ninety-two to ninety-four. But if we can be ninety or above, we're sitting pretty good. So we started out at eighty-five point eight this year with all of the market changes that we made. You know, some areas were more than others, some areas had no change. It averaged a four point nine percent county-wide increase in valuation, which ended our assessment ratio at ninety point seven for the year. The next one is just a, kind of our, we're mandated to look at three approaches to value the cost, income, and sales comparison. The cost approach is, is realistically the most unbiased approach that is there. We use Marshall and Swift valuation services, so we go out and record how big is it? What is it constructed of? How many bathrooms? You know, what's the roofing? What's the siding? We put all of that data in. That data get, then gets compared to the Marshall and Swift costs, and every building is costed. Again, there's no influence by appraisers, location, anything. This is just raw cost. That is the foundation of our principles, is the cost. Once we have that cost to build a, a property or an improvement, then we look at the age of that improvement and the quality of that improvement. And it starts being factored up or down. Depreciation takes into account. And we start calculating all of those new values against replacement cost new. Income approach is another one that we're required to look at. It's not applicable for residential. This is only for income-producing properties. And it's just a way to capture their, their actual income and capitalize that income value to determine what is their market value. Sales comparison approach, that is kind of, for us, it's, it's realistically a hybrid. Where we start with the cost, we figure out what does it cost to build it new, take out depreciation, we grade that. Then we start looking at the sales. And then we compare our models against that, that cost less depreciation approach to determine what do we need to do in this area? Does this area need a four percent increase or does it need a four percent decrease? That's where we look at. The sales comparison gets a little mimicked with the fee appraiser side where they pick out three comparables and they make individual adjustments to those comparables to fit the subject. We don't have that luxury on a mass appraisal spectrum. We have to take all of the sales and blend them. It's a similar approach, but there's a lot of differences. When we get into the appeal process of things, then we can break that down and start looking at three or four comparables to, to show and document our, our values are true and accurate. Next slide is our growth. Again, we have about seven thousand building permits annually. Anytime something is constructed new in the county, we have to track and, and, and capture that growth so that budgets can be, be fairly adjusted, if you will. As you can see, and I do have an error on there, the growth value, it, it says two thousand and ten. It should be two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and nineteen. You know, we had a pretty good spike in two thousand and fourteen on the number of building permits. In two thousand and sixteen, they dropped down to just under eight thousand. They've stayed pretty, pretty static for sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. But if you look at our growth, even though our, our building permits have maintained, our growth has increased. That is the market value. And again, as the growth continues to grow, so do the budgets. The next slide is we do administer a lot of exemptions and benefit programs. We are the front lines for the taxpayers. If they have any questions, to contact us. You know, we are there to assist them and to help them. If they're eligible, we, we aid them in their application and answer their questions. You know, some of the examples, again, are owner occupy, the elderly frees, discretionary formulas, disabled veterans, renewable energies, religious, educational, charitable exemptions, agricultural exemptions, tax moratorium, historical. The list is pretty extensive. The next slide is some of the things that our office has accomplished here in two thousand and nineteen. You know, as the board is aware, we've been in a conversion for twenty years to move out of the AS four hundred to the ProVal tax system. When I came on board a little over a year ago, we had about twenty-eight thousand parcels to convert. I'm happy to report that we've transitioned about twenty-two thousand of those parcels this last year. We're now valuing all cities, towns, and some of our townships for the two thousand and twenty assessment year out of the ProVal. We have roughly about eighty-eight hundred parcels remaining to convert. These are all townships. And of those eighty-eight hundred parcels, there's only about fifty-seven hundred that are improved. The rest of those are vacant agricultural land or, or non-agricultural land. But we should be able to move through these fairly rapidly this summer. And by two thousand and twenty-one assessment, all values should be coming out of one program. Neighborhood subdivisions, again, as I've had some meetings with, with you, the commissioners, we had fairly large neighborhoods throughout the county, you know, we had neighborhoods. I, I, I'll use Brandon as an example. Brandon is one neighborhood in past years. We are looking at breaking Brandon up, and I believe we're looking at ten different sub-neighborhoods, if you will. So that smaller sub-neighborhood will only be valued against itself. It won't be valued against something across town or where there's a hot market or new construction, especially if you look at the older part of Brandon. Those house values have been increased and increased due to probably new construction and sales occurring that are growing rapidly. So they're growing in value, but not at the same rate. By us breaking up those neighborhoods into smaller subgroups, we'll be able to calibrate and isolate their independent values a little more accurately. Also, by doing that, and, and all of the ones we converted this year, in Sioux Falls, we converted eight neighborhoods. We're also looking at the land. They were valued at front foot rates, which is very difficult to explain to taxpayers and understand. We're converting all of those to a square foot rate. We're finding a lot of anomalies in those values. Now at a square foot rate, if you've got a ten thousand square foot lot and your neighbor has a twelve thousand square foot lot, the twelve thousand square foot lot will be attributable to more value. It's a one-to-one relationship. In the past, on front foot, depending on if you had more frontage than your neighbor, he might have had a bigger lot but was valued less. So we're cleaning a lot of that, a lot of that up and, and equalizing that. We'll continue to do that as we, as we migrate our neighborhoods and split them down. Mapping advancements, we've worked with GIS. We've brought a lot of mapping to us on our minimap. Some of the things that we're now mapping that was never mapped in the past is the qualities of homes. So my appraisers can take one glance at the map, look at all of the qualities in an area, determine are they all uniform, are they equal? You know, obviously, somebody could build a mansion in the middle of a, of a fair quality home neighborhood. There is gonna be anomalies. But in general, there's a lot of homogenous to a neighborhood. And so our quality should be reflective in that. And so we're finding a lot of those when you've got over twenty years of past and multiple people looking at a neighborhood. There's a lot of discrepancies and, and we should be able to clean a lot of that up. We're mapping our values, our sales, our sales ratio, ages, conditions. So we're getting a lot of visual mapping that has never been achieved before. That should really aid us moving forward, especially with our physical review. Some of the things we look forward to in our two thousand and twenty agenda and our goals is to convert the remaining parcels, obviously, to split all of our remaining neighborhoods. I don't know if we'll get them all done this year. There's a lot of work to do, but we're gonna keep moving forward with that. If not this year, hopefully by next year, we'll have all of those split in, in smaller study groups. We need to develop our calibration analysis for, analysis for ProVal. That's an internal program that takes a snapshot of all of the properties and all of the sales and gives us all of our statistics so we can very efficiently look at all of the sales and find out what types of property sold, what ages of property, what sizes of property, what qualities, what conditions. And it gives us our ratios and it will give us our statistical models that we need. It'll tell us our median ratio is eighty-nine and our standard deviation is a, is a twenty-five and our coefficient of dispersions. All of those are numbers that we use. And that helps me isolate and pin down very rapidly, especially at the end of the year. If all the statistics are good in a smaller sub-neighborhood, I don't need to take a lot of in-depth look in that one. When I get to a When I get to another one that, that maybe my median is a ninety-two, but my, my deviation is a, is a thirty and my price-related differential is really high, I can pull that back then and I can pull out the individual parcels and look at that. And then, I say, well, my median is ninety-two. Well, that's good. That's right where I want to be. But I find out that my older homes are at an eighty and my newer are at a hundred and two. Well, my newer homes need to come down. My older homes need to go up. But without that calibration analysis in there, you wouldn't necessarily see that. And we do have tools to do that right now. That is exactly what we do and how we do it. The difference is, is the efficiencies of doing that. It's all built within, within the CAMA system. So, when we can get onto that, it will greatly aid us. Again, we're going to work on transitioning the tax system from AS400 to ENCODE. That's the next step. Once we get all of our values moved into ProVal, then we can take all of those values and put them into the new tax system, which is ENCODE. Currently, the auditor and treasurer's office are on ENCODE. My office is not. I want to get on that as soon as possible. That just makes the workflow a little more efficient. Registered deeds is going to be our hang-up on that if they don't transition in ENCODE. If all departments were on it, the workflow, registered deeds, when they, when they record that deed and put that in, that information flows to my office. When we do our workups and put our values, our information flows to the auditor's office. And from the auditors, it flows to the treasurer. So, if we can all be on the same program, it will really advance things in the county. We're going to get there. I don't know if it's going to be this year or not. My goal is this year. I don't know if we're going to have time. I've, I've kind of already reserved myself to maybe one more year of AS400 for the, for the assessment notices and where the values go. Not to generate values, but only to hold them, to send out assessment notices and maintain the exemptions. Again, we're looking at converting all the remaining land into square-foot. We do need to upgrade ProVal as soon as we get our abstract put in and approved. I need to do some major advancements within our ProVal. We're one release away from losing support. So, we are about eighteen releases behind right now. So, that is going to occur here very soon, probably in the next month, I'm hopeful. With that, there's a few things that come with the program that will aid us. There's a document storage, kind of like our parcel manager, where we can, we can have a mirrored. As we have a document in owner-occupied, it can be attached right to that parcel. So, we don't have to go out to a separate program and search that. It'll be right within the program. You can click another tab and have all of that readily at your hands. So, there's a few, few things that are going to come with that. We need to develop our house-type factors for, for style and age. Again, that's to analyze the market. So, we'll have a neighborhood, but I'll be able to break it down even deeper than just saying, here's the neighborhood and here's the houses. I'll be able to look at the age of the home, compare one stories against one stories, not one stories with two stories. I'll be able to refine that and, and dial that in. We need to establish the correct depreciation tables using condition and effective age. That's something that's been broken that I discovered here. In the AS400, they typically run and say, when you have a brand-new house, you're a hundred percent. And as they, as it gets older, they start manually taking away that depreciation. When we get into ProVal, it's a different software where it uses a blended model of the condition and the age. So, right now, ProVal has been set up to only run strictly on age. So, the problem is, is if you have a, if two thousand house and your neighbor has a two thousand house and your house is well-maintained, it's average condition, and your neighbor's is really defunct and the siding is falling off, the windows are broke out, things like that, that condition is not there. Because they're the same age, they're getting the same depreciation. So, when I incorporate our conditions in this year, I've got all the, all the tools I need in the script to insert that. It will make a difference between those two. They're, they are the same age. So, the starting point will be the same, but the other house is at a worse condition. So, that one will have additional value removed from it. Again, more for the calibration side of things. We also are going to build our commercial building model. That was on my goal last year. We didn't get it done. We had a lot to bite off. But the commercial building model, what that will enable us to do is say, regardless of the neighborhood, and I'll use Sioux Falls as an example, regardless of the neighborhood, this area of Sioux Falls downtown as compared to Forty-first Street. The land, the neighborhood, the lands are going to be different values and thus, the factors could be different for the buildings. When we build our commercial building model, it will enable my commercial appraisers to say, here's this neighborhood and here's this neighborhood. But now, within the model, I will look at all the banks. So, if we make an adjustment, if we have data that says our banks need to go up five percent, I can put that in. And banks, and banks only will go up five percent. And that will cross neighborhood boundaries. So, it will create equalization within commercial building types. So, we can break that down into the retail, the, the large retail, the auto dealerships, the banks, the fast foods, the restaurants. It will help us be more fair and more equal within styles and uses of properties. And again, begin a desktop review. My appraisers are already starting to do that now as the, most of them are working from home. They're looking through our mapping, looking at their grades, looking at their conditions, isolating and finding when we can actually get back out in the field and go. They're going to have a, a good head start on what they're looking for, where equalization needs to occur, and prepare us for our physical review to begin in 2021.
Thank you. Very thorough. Other questions? Commissioner Karski.
I guess more comments than questions. I keep referring to the AS400. Amazing technology thirty-five years ago. I had one in my office twenty-five years ago. I mean, what you're doing is, instead of making a bigger boxes, you're making smaller boxes. And there's going to be some disruption to people. Some are going to see a benefit from it because they're going to be more fairly assessed and others are going to see a change because the, the assessment wasn't done maybe equitably, as you, you're saying. So, I mean, I, there's going to be some, I hate to use the word pain, but definitely disruption with what's going on. How many people are in your office, Chris?
Right now, we've got twenty-two.
And how many of them are assessors?
Thirteen.
Thirteen assessors? Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barrie.
This is Jeff. Chris, at some point, are, are these new technologies going to allow for a smaller workforce in your department? I'm not suggesting we downsize now. But as we invest in new, new programs, new computers, at some point, you hope that there's more production coming out of the factory, so to speak. And along those lines, do you have any ways of measuring productivity in your workforce?
To answer your first question, do I foresee a downsize in our, in our staff? I do not. What I can see, though, is maybe a shift in a couple of personnel when we, when we get down to it. I, I think I'm a little light on appraisers, or I will be light on appraisers. And I'll be a little long in some of my support staff once we get onto these base programs. Appraisers are, are the foot soldiers, if you will. And as the county continues to grow and as we do a physical review, if we're going to maintain equalization, we need to put boots on the ground and visit properties. That takes people. There's just no way around it. When, inside the office, some of the efficiencies will occur with the data entry, with how it's handled, with how it's managed. That's where I can see through attrition down the road, you know, maybe four or five years down the road that some of my support staff might be, if, if one of them were to leave, I might not fill that position, but I might ask to fill that position with an appraiser. That's where I see the need. As far as tracking of, of their work, right now, it's pretty difficult because it's only building permits. That's all they've been doing, the appraisers, is building permits. And they've said they're so busy, and they are busy. I don't want to take that away from them. The difference is, is that they get a list of building permits. Let's just say, what wasn't done last November first? You know, somebody took out a building permit to do their basement. It wasn't done. They were there. Now, as we start, they're going to their list and going back to that property. Well, if that property owner still isn't done, they record that where they're at today. And then, they move on to the next one and they move on to the next one. When they get to the end of their list, they go back to the beginning and then they go back to that property owner. There's been some instances of properties that have been, been visited four, five, six times in a single year to check on the furthering completion. That is going to change. We are going to go to the property once. We're going to go around November first. If it's done, great, we'll record that. If it's not done, we'll record that at that time where that's at. We'll be back around the next November first. That's our legal assessment date. What that's going to do is free up all of that time in between for them to do the physical reviews. They will be going. I anticipate each of my appraisers will probably be doing roughly seven hundred to a thousand parcels going door-to-door-to-door every summer. And then, transitioning in the fall, probably around that October timeframe, to then go on to the building permits and do another four hundred properties in those months and get those finalized and put into the system. So, the work is going to change. The appraisers are going to see a lot more properties than they have in the past. And, and we need to. That was also another reason why I chose to break those neighborhoods up. You know, when we have a neighborhood of twenty-six hundred parcels, I can't send an appraiser out there and say, okay, I need you to go review this neighborhood this summer. We need to do them all. If we're going to start it, we've got to do them all. Well, I can't expect an appraiser to get through twenty-six hundred properties in a summer. And I, and I don't want to put another appraiser into that neighborhood because then I have two different perceptions. You know, there's a standing rule in our office. If you're wrong, be wrong on all of them and be consistent. If you're right, be right on all of them and be consistent. So, even if I had an appraiser, if, if I had a neighborhood that was all average houses to, to every other appraiser in the office, but this one appraiser said they're all fares, that's fine. As long as he's calling them all consistent and he's the only one that does that. Because then, I will pick that up in the factor universally. So, I don't want multiple people looking at one area. I want one person looking at all of them so that there is, maintains as much consistency as we can. By having smaller subgroups, breaking these neighborhoods up from twenty-six hundred parcels down to five to seven hundred parcels, I can, I can expect that appraiser to then get through those seven hundred properties in a summer and, and physically look at them. And so, they're all treated the same at the same time. That's one of the goals of breaking that up. So, right now, it's pretty difficult to track their, their production other than through their building permit counts. And then, again, some have more, some have less, depending on the growth in their neighborhoods that they're responsible for. We'll be looking at finalizing or, or maybe now having smaller subgroups where I can transition. Somebody's light, you know, maybe somebody only has two hundred and fifty building permits and somebody has six hundred. Maybe I can take one of those smaller subgroups and assign it to a new appraiser so that his building permit count would go up. This one would go down and start equalizing the workload between my appraisers. That's yet to come, but we'll get there.
Commissioner Hyper.
Thank you very much.
Just wondering about, you'd mentioned that you needed updated pictures for all of your properties. Do we ever use drones? We've got pictometry that can zero down onto a tennis ball in your backyard. And so, are we using pictometry?
We do use pictometry.
In order to measure the sizes of the building? And we've got street-level Google Maps. Why can't we use some of those technologies in order to, instead of physically going out and taking pictures of all these houses? I would think that your assessments could go down if you're starting to do more things with technology.
Yes, yes. Drones, I, I, there's been a lot of discussion through I double A O on the use of drones. I don't know that we're there yet. You know, I don't know what the expense is, what we would need. You know, it, it's something definitely, I think the future is coming. As far as the physical photos, yes, we use pictometry. We use pictometry all the time, especially if there's a discrepancy of, of a measurement. Pictometry, we are legally able to measure. Even with pictometry, it's great, but you can't measure everything. Depending on when the plumage comes out on the trees, the backside of the house is where you think there's an air and all of a sudden, there's trees there. You have pictometry, but you can't see through that foliage. When it works, it's great. And we do utilize pictometry a lot. As far as the pictures go, it's just one of the, and I hate to say the way we've always done it. It's one of those standards that we are required to maintain photos of the property. One of the nice things, and, and I'm putting in my budget, which you'll get, I'm, I'm asking for fourteen cameras for this year. The ones that we have in the office are, are huge dinosaurs. Most of the appraisers have been utilizing their cell phones to take pictures. Some of the issues that we have with that is the data storage and the size and uploading of photos with our, with our FOIA request. CoreLogic, for instance, wants all of our photos. Well, you have your, your iPhone thirteen and it's excellent quality and then somebody else has a lower quality. There's no standardization as to the quality or the size of the photos. It grows very large. Some of our photos don't have date imprint. That is one of the things I'm looking at, just getting the Nikon Coolpix, setting them down to the lowest resolution with a date imprint on there. That is, that date imprint is also a good note for us to say, my appraiser physically was at this property on this date. We know when it was reviewed. That's a very important thing for me. And it's, it's been proven to me in past years that my appraiser was there, even if they failed to make a note that they were there, you know. People happen, but the photo doesn't lie. So...
All right. Other questions? Commissioner Benniga?
Chris, yeah, I do have one additional question. When you reassess a neighborhood and do a new appraisal, how many times are your staff able to go to the interior of a home and frankly, assess the quality level of what those countertops are, what the wood finishes are versus another home which would not have as many of those improvements? What percentage of the time are you able to go inside?
The answer is, I don't know. I don't know down here yet. There hasn't been one done. I can tell you, in my past experience, we got in about ninety percent. Again, that was another county where we did active physical reviews. The public was already aware that we are out and about. I mean, I'm going to be at your door once every four to six years knocking on your door, whether you took out a building permit or not. That history has already been established, so people were aware of it and expected it. Down here, where it hasn't occurred for twenty years, I don't know what response we're going to get. What I can tell you is, again, in my budget, I'm putting in for an increase in my postage and office supplies. That's simply to cover the physical reviews. We will be mailing out mailers ahead as we get to a neighborhood that we're going to go to. We'll be mailing out notifications of those property owners. Here's what we're going to do. We're going to be in your neighborhood in the next couple of weeks. This is the reason why. This is that. And then, kind of explain the process of, if we catch you home, great. Hopefully, they'll let us in. If they don't, you know, then we have to do what we call a sidewalk assessment, which is, we make our best educated guess. In those cases, typically, as I walk around a home, if I don't have any basement finish, you know, we can't look in windows. But if I'm walking around the outside of the home and I see curtains in the windows in the basement and I can see the, the window sills are there and I don't get into that home, I'm going to assume that basement is finished. That is a, a, it's, it's realistically the only fair thing to do. When you have the people that let us into their home, if people do not, the people that let us in are actually in. We don't, don't do something with that value. They're shifting that tax burden out of the people that are following the rules.
Thank you.
Anything else? Great question.
I'll have more for you later, once we, once we get in our first year of, year of physical review, to find out what our, what our reception rate is and, and how many properties we visit versus how many we can actually get access. You know, we're always going to have the ones that will not let us in their house.
And I know, Chris, you and I had a chance to visit and that you were doing kind of a internal review with your staff about the equalization hearings that we just had a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, we're just trying to capture feedback from folks that participated in that process so that we can work to make it a better experience for everyone next year. And I would invite the commissioners as well, that if you guys, well, it's still kind of fresh in our minds, if you have some thoughts, feedback about the process that was used or or anything about the equalization hearings, if you could just drop those comments to Carol. I'm gonna volunteer her to be the central depository of our ideas. And Chris has volunteered that he's planning to come back and visit with the commission in a month or so to kind of help us understand the thoughts that his staff had about ways we could make improvements. So, thank you. All right, thank you very much.
For the opportunity.
Yeah, you bet. Okay, so that takes us to our next presentation. Monty Wattenbach on the Information Technology Department. Thank you for being patient. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Monty Wattenbach, Minnehaw County IT Director. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to come and speak with you today. I'll try to be brief and give you the opportunity to ask questions. So I just wanna start off with, you know, what does Minnehaw County IT do? And explain that Minnehaw County IT is a central IT department for all county departments. We have, give or take, fifteen departments here at the county. All of those departments have different functions. So you just listen to Chris talk about his his function here at the county. And their function is much different than, let's say, human services or the attorneys or law enforcement. And all of those groups have different software needs. So with that said, Minnehaw County IT supports all county departments by providing and maintaining the infrastructure to operate in a reliable and secure fashion. So by infrastructure, I mean network switches, servers, storage, firewalls, those kinds of things. So for that work, you know, we work internally with with our own department. We don't need necessarily partner with departments to figure out those kinds of things. Our departments just expect that, you know, when they when they come to work, it's they're in a reliable, secure environment. So that's that's what we do when it comes to maintaining that infrastructure. So with that foundation, Minnehaw County IT partners with departments to find innovative solutions in order to maximize productivity while at the same time minimizing costs and risks. This includes purchasing solutions as well as developing in-house solutions and providing support for those solutions. So we are kind of unique here at the county where we do have the capability to develop software. The county's always been that way. It's evolved a lot in the timeframe that I've been here. So over the past nine years, we have really been evolving our development skills to developing modern applications versus AS400-based applications. So, you know, the county developed AS400 applications for, give or take, twenty, twenty or thirty years before I got here. So it's taken a long time to evolve off of that. And that has happened through a combination of purchasing and developing software. So some completed projects. As you may know, we had a multi-year project to implement Tyler Munis. The third and final phase was the payroll phase. That went live in June of 2019. And that that whole project is now complete, on time and under budget. As far as payroll in particular, there's a lot more automation to that process. So instead of a payroll clerk going line by line, looking at time entry and entering that data into the payroll application, reports and exports, take that that information and it's imported into the Munis payroll. So we want to, when we went through this project, we wanted to really make sure that that time entry information was accurate and correct so that when we import it, there's minimal to no editing or modifying of that that time entry data. We also completed the Tyler Detect install. So at the end of the Tyler Munis project, we really looked at a solution that they also offered to help secure our environment. So this Tyler Detect solution pulls logs from our servers, firewalls, switches into one repository or database and looks at all of those logs, analyzes them to determine if there have been any security issues that we should be notified of. So this is actually a partially hosted solution. So if they see something that, you know, rises to the level of notifying us, they will notify us on the weekend or evenings or what have you. So that was put in place in early 2020. We rolled out Office 2019. Microsoft is really trying to push customers to Office 365, which someday we will probably have to go to that. But it's a lot more expensive than just purchasing a version of Office and sticking with it. So that's kind of the strategy that we've used at this point is purchase a version of Office. And we don't necessarily need every version of Microsoft Office that comes out. Network switches, so I'll just mention this just because it's a core part of our infrastructure. So the switches that we have at our campus, you know, are approximately ten years old. And we're close to having all of them completed. I have it marked as completed, but it's close to completed. And again, there's nothing exciting about that. Nobody notices it. It's just expected that when, you know, people come to work, you know, they're in a reliable and secure environment. And we also rolled out all of our desktop computers for 2020 that we purchased. So, you know, we're trying to purchase the right device for the right group of users. So as you may know, we've been purchasing tablets for the attorneys the past several years. And all of those attorneys now have tablets. There might be an exception here and there. But for the most part, all the attorneys now have tablets. They can go to court, they have Wi-Fi network over there and a more modern application. So they can see, they can pull up documents from their tablet, charges, all of that information right within the courtroom or home or what have you. So those attorneys can also take those tablets home, VPN back into work and have access to that information. Okay, current projects. The first two are applications that we are evolving off of the AS400. So the county aid lien application is an AS400-based application that is, again, just part of our strategy of evolving off of the AS400. So this application is about, I'm gonna say eighty percent complete. And it's a lot more user-friendly, it's a lot more functional. I'm excited to show Kim here soon the capability where they can make certain that the liens that come over balance the report that they originally got so that they can confirm everything that's being recorded is matching the reports of the liens that are coming in. So we'll have better accountability in that regard. The facilities work order application, again, was an AS400-based application being modernized. They have a couple of computers throughout the campus. So those technicians will be able to log into this application, see their work orders. They will be able to see notes of technicians that maybe fixed an HVA system before them. Look at those repair notes. They'll be able to see manuals. All of that will be entered into the system. It'll take some time for them to kind of take some of those documents and attach them to equipment. But it'll just be a more modern application. The patrol in-car video solution, I have it listed as current, but since I created this particular PowerPoint slide, that has been completed. So I wanna kind of give a shout out to Joe Bossman, who kind of handled most of the logistics of this, of making sure the patrol cars came in to get them re- regeared and whatnot. But the patrol cars' previous video solution was put in the year that I started. So it's approximately nine years old and just needed to be refreshed. So that solution is in place and, you know, is an important part of, you know, those patrol officers recording those traffic stops and what's happening and an important part of the evidence that that is used by the state's attorney's office. And upgrading to a more robust backup solution is something that we're currently working through. Again, not not something that's necessarily exciting to you. But, you know, we live in a scary time where there's lots of ransomware and it's critical for us to make sure that we're getting information backed up reliably and in off-site and in a timely fashion. The amount of data that we have here is growing at a very fast rate. Most of it being the video from, you know, the in-car video solutions. You know, it used to be the attorneys had CDs and DVDs with video evidence. And now those went into physical folders. And there may be still some of that exists for some outside private law firms. But the state's attorney's office, public defender, public advocates, for the most part, are just relying on the system that we developed that that video goes into. And they can share that video out amongst their their own offices. So storing that video is, takes out a lot of storage space. Okay, and, you know, I've talked a lot about replacing those AS400-based applications with Windows-based applications. I believe this exact PowerPoint slide I've had for probably seven years in a row here now, but it still applies. We are, we are replacing these kind of applications, and this is not an exaggeration. So, you know, we get the young workforce that that comes here to the county and they look at that top screen and they don't know, you know, what to do. They don't know where to put their mouse, they don't know what function keys are. Yet, we have employees that have been using some of those applications for a long time and they can ten-key and navigate those pretty fast. So when we're developing applications, we're trying to meet meet a lot of different expectations. But it's went well and and we continue to make progress in that regard. Future opportunities? Well, I just talked about us finishing up the Tyler Munis project. But in IT, that's just kind of how it works. We have software upgrades to perform. So both for ENCODE and Munis, we have to move to those next versions. So when we were implementing those, we were implementing the newest product that was available to us. Okay, so with ENCODE, they already had ENCODE 10 out in other states. ENCODE 9 was the only property tax solution available on the market at all for the state of South Dakota. And while ENCODE 10 was available in other states, it was not available for us in the state of South Dakota. So we're hoping to migrate onto that newer version. That will be a very welcome upgrade. And then as far as Munis goes, for the financial portion, we're looking to upgrade from Munis 11 to 12. So with some core products like this, you know, it's gonna take some some county resources. So the auditor's office will be working with us very closely. The treasurer's office for for the ENCODE portion and the Munis portion a little bit. So anyways, we just have to work with them to find the best timeframe that works, put those new versions in in our testing environment. We'll run through test payrolls and various different processes to make sure that that all of the processes that we rely on to run our business work in the new version, that everything's set up correct before we we do those cutovers. So that's a cooperation with our office, several other county offices and the vendor themselves. Another future opportunity is an off-site disaster recovery location. So we have talked over the past year or two about having a disaster recovery location at the museum archive facility. It's a great facility out there. I think that would would suit well. We would have to do some upgrades out there, specifically a generator. So we've talked about that for a while, but there's been some conversation about a new 911 center. If that still happens, that would be a fantastic place for us to have a backup location. So we do have somewhat of a backup location, off-site storage, I like to call it. But to have someplace where county employees could also show up and do core functions like payroll, pay bills, those kind of things would would be helpful. So I think that it just kind of depends how some of those things play out as far as, you know, what we might want to do there. As far as staffing requests coming up, I've had this, you know, kind of a couple of years out for quite some time. And I did not bump it out a year this year. I left it at 2020. So it's not something that will be in my budget this year for 2021. But I do plan on having a full-time security administrator in the future. And really what that will do is kind of shift some work that several different people are doing to kind of, you know, work that's gonna be the focus of one person. So it's not something that they do here and there as part of their job, but it's gonna be their their core responsibility. So really, that's the only staffing changes that that I see coming up. With that said, I'm open to any questions you may have.
Great presentation. Questions, comments? Commissioner Heiburger?
I was gonna wait and see if anybody had any questions because mine's more just a comment. And Monty's been here a little bit longer than I have and and he definitely has not stayed where he was when he came here. And I greatly appreciate your your vision to take us to the next step and your continually learning about new opportunities for, you know, I think when I came, we were coming to work for a great big stack of papers every single day. Now we have iPads. And there was a time where we couldn't share confidential information because you couldn't do it over the internet. And now we get those confidential things through emails or through different platforms. And things have just changed significantly at our desk, but at everyone's desk. And then also to recognize the staff that's behind you because if you didn't have the dedicated, talented staff in that office, we wouldn't be where we are today. If I have a problem, I can call up your office and I don't have to ask for you. I can ask for several other people behind the scenes and they'll fix my issues over the phone. And if I don't, they're like, hey, just bring it in and we'll fix it for you. We have a wonderful ID part IT department. And that doesn't take away from the rest of the county because we have a lot of really fantastic employees. And why do you want to work for county? I don't know, other than we have a lot of great people to work with. And and I appreciate this job and I appreciate the wonderful people I work with. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Karski?
A couple, I guess, if you indulge me. I'm gonna pick on three of our other elected officials that are in this building, our register of deeds, our auditor and our treasurer. We are so dependent on those three offices sharing information. And we had a comment from their director of equalization on getting everybody on the same platform on ENCODE. Can you maybe elaborate where that whole process is?
Yeah, I'll do my best. So I, I, I feel that ENCODE 10 is gonna be a piece of that puzzle. I think with ENCODE 10, it will allow maybe some of those groups to maybe play on on the same field or in the same application together. So that's part of it. There's just a lot of moving parts with what's going on there. So equalization, having some of their parcels that they're evaluating in the AS400 and some in PROVAL, that creates a challenge. And so those those different, those different aspects, I think, will, with time, work work their way out. And I think that having ENCODE 10 will help, I think, the register of deeds more seamlessly become a part of that as well. So I think it'll play its way out. It just needs, it needs a little bit more time for equalization to get over to PROVAL and hopefully for us to get to ENCODE 10.
I'm sensing cautious optimism.
Yes.
Okay. You referred to the, you know, the off-site recovery and, you know, disaster recovery location and the new metro communications. Have you coordinated any of that conversation with the city and make space needs and getting all that involved? I, because I hadn't, and maybe I missed the conversation.
Yeah.
Heard much about that.
So the city IT department invited me to come and meet with them and and my request in the server room is basically two racks worth of equipment. So two racks worth of equipment is sufficient for us to have everything we need at a backup location. And then as far as office space goes, you know, I don't know that I had as much of say of a say in that, but I think there's going to be some office space there where, you know, if we were in some sort of pinch, I would hope we could have some staff sit out there and do things, like I said, like payroll or paying bills or what have you. My main need is, you know, a location that has the proper HVAC controls so our equipment doesn't get hot, has a generator, has a well-connected network connection. Because when we're pushing information out to that other location, we need lots of bandwidth to push all of the documents and video and data that we need to push to that site. So just by default, that 911 center is gonna have a generator. It's gonna be well-connected via the network. And it's not gonna be real close proximity here. So it has a lot of things going for it already, just just by default, I guess. So I think that would be a good fit. And I'm crossing my fingers that that can still happen.
And I understand. I mean, that can be a very hardened structure. And, you know, the part that is gonna have to protect all of that stuff is gonna be hardened to a different level than offices, for example. So I, you know, I'm glad to hear that forward-thinking and moving on that. So thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? Commissioner Benniga or Commissioner Barth? Don't wanna ignore you guys.
I would just like to add that as Cindy has already indicated that we've come a long ways in the IT department because of Monty's leadership and the support of his staff. IT is usually not a real exciting topic until it doesn't work or you have a crash. And we have not had that happen because of those individuals who are working hard behind the scenes to make us more effective and efficient. And I truly, over the last number of years, have had the opportunity to work with the IT leadership. And I think we have one of the best in the regions. And I'd like to make sure that they're aware of that.
Thank you.
Chairman Jeff here. I guess if, just in comment, I really appreciate the fact that we're able to do this meeting on video Zoom. And, you know, although it took a little bit of time to get that. And, you know, although it took a little bit of time to get that happening, it's so much better than the phone call type thing we were doing earlier.
And I appreciate seeing you, Jeff, even though you may not be able to see me.
Yeah.
Sorry about the reflection. The overhead lights made me look bald.
All right, anything else?
I just want to thank you again. You guys do do a great job. I'm excited to see your attention to security issues. Those are ongoing issues for everyone in not an area where anybody can be content to rest on their laurels. So I appreciate your attention to that area as well.
Thank you all for your time.
All right, thank you. All right. DJ Boothie has joined us on Zoom, so we get to see his face as well. And DJ, you have the next few items. First item is item 13, Consider a Motion to Authorize the Highway Department Application for the 2020 Build Planning Grant.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothie, Highway Superintendent. Thank you for allowing me to join via Zoom today. I appreciate that opportunity. We've been working diligently on the Maple Street-Park Street project here over the last two years. Currently, we're nearing the end of the preliminary design phase, which has been going on for now several months. The City of Brandon and the City of Sioux Falls teamed up with us in completing this phase. And this project is going to be a future reconstruction project of Maple Street and Park Street from Veterans Parkway to South Dakota Highway 11. The build grant is called the Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development Grant. It's a federal grant that allows local and state governments to perform reconstruction projects similar to this that are more expensive than what that local government can afford to pay for out of its own budget. And so that's probably the best way that we're going to be able to complete this project. The project right now, as it stands, is estimated to cost over $15 million. And so that's significantly more than our annual budget, let alone any other project that we've ever completed before. So we've been looking at this type of a grant now for a couple of years to be able to complete this project. The phase that we're going to be entering into next is the final design phase. And so we're looking at trying to obtain a build grant to do this final design phase. We're estimating the total cost of that phase to be $1,226,121. And we're proposing a 20% match along with the City of Brandon and the City of Sioux Falls in order to apply for this grant. The 20% match is not required for this grant application, but it will look like a better application if we were to provide a local match. And so we proposed 20% to the City of Sioux Falls and the City of Brandon, and they were agreeable to that. And so that's the way that this grant application has been structured. That would leave the actual grant application for a grant request of $980,897, with the local match being $245,224. And of that, the county's portion would be $142,230. City of Sioux Falls, $56,401. And City of Brandon, $46,592. And so the timeline for this grant, the application, is due later this month. And grants must be or will be awarded in September of 2020. And then all funds must be spent by September 30 of 2027. We would hope to be moving forward with final design if we receive this grant by the end of the year and complete it by December of '22. And so at earliest, we'd be able to start construction possibly in 2023. But that would be really an ideal situation where we're able to acquire all the right-of-way, complete all the final design, and not run into any major obstacles. We're going to have some environmental issues to work through and some landowner issues to work through because we do need to acquire right-of-way along the entire corridor. And so really, 2023 would be the most ideal situation, and it's possible that it could be moved back depending on the availability of the grant and the environmental and the landowner issues that we might run into. So today, we're looking for the Commission's approval for this grant application. And we do have a subsequent agenda item following this one that will authorize the matching funds of the 20% for our portion of the grant. So with that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Karski?
DJ, I know you've been working on this project for at least a couple of years, and it's probably another five years till it's optimistically completed. And I hate referring it as the Maple Street-Park Street corridor. I'm just, for simplicity's sake, I'm just gonna refer to it as Boothie Boulevard. The $142,000, is that highway fund money or is that general fund money?
That would be highway fund money.
It's all highway fund money. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a comment, kind of on the same line, is that this project has been in the works for a very long time and will be there for a long time. And right now, the preliminary costs of this estimate of this whole project, which will probably be, I'm assuming the biggest project we've ever done, is over $15 million. This is a really big project. It will be very beneficial to Sioux Falls and Brandon in that area when and if it gets completed. And so we hope that we get a grant just to get us off the ground and get going. But this is a very expensive project.
Yeah, it's a complicated, it'd be a good final exam for some civil engineering student, probably. It's a complicated road. But I think I really, DJ and his team deserve a lot of credit. They've really pulled together a very collaborative team where they've got the City of Sioux Falls involved and the City of Brandon involved. And the highway is participating, or the county is participating. And we're looking at federal funding. So that's what it takes to pull off a huge project like this. But it will be a real game changer for that part of Minnehaha County and for the City of Brandon, for sure. So I appreciate your leadership on that. I'm very supportive of this project.
Thank you, Commissioners.
I'd entertain a motion. Motion to approve? The motion is...
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further comments? Roll call, vote, please.
Hi.
Heiburger?
Hi.
Karski?
Hi.
Barth?
Hi.
Bender?
Hi. Motion passes unanimously. So as DJ mentioned, the next item is related. Okay, didn't quite hear that.
It seemed like we were stick to nothing there, but there's, you know. Wanted an early start.
Okay. So the next item, item 14, is Consider a Resolution Authorizing a Funding Match for that same 2020 Build Planning Grant Application. So as DJ mentioned, this would be to authorize expenditure of highway funds in the amount of $142,230.04. I missed something, DJ?
Commissioners, again, this is just the follow-up for the previous agenda item. And this is the resolution committing to that 20% funding match. And so this authorizes us to spend the $142,230 towards that grant match. And this resolution will be attached to the grant application just to show that the Commission does support and will fund this project if the grant is received.
Commissioner Karski?
If I understand this correctly, DJ, the whole purpose of this is to show a commitment. Like you said, when this request is reviewed for funding, that, hey, we are in on this. We have, I know some people hate that term, skin in the game to make this thing happen, correct?
That is correct, yes. And I should add too that this level of funding is in our budget for this year as well.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? Roll call, vote, please.
Heiburger?
Hi.
Karski?
Hi.
Barth?
Hi.
Bennega?
Hi.
Bender?
Hi. Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to your last item, DJ, which is to authorize the Chair to sign Amendment Number 1 to the Minnehaha County or the Minnehaha Community Water Corporation Agreement dated March 31, 2020 for utility relocation.
Commissioners, we had previously entered into an agreement with the Rural Water Corporation for relocating their utilities, their water line that is in the 146 corridor. And we also entered into an agreement with East River Electrics, their corporation, in order to relocate their utilities. During construction, we found out that there would be a conflict with those two relocations. And so we determined that relocating the water line would be cheaper than relocating the power line in this particular case. And so we are having to amend the agreement with Minnehaha County Water Corporation in order to get that out of the way of the proposed electric utility. And so this amendment is for $20,697.25, and that will come out of our contracted construction budget as one of our contingencies that we have set aside for this project.
Questions? Motion to approve?
Second, and it just goes to show that water and electricity don't mix.
Right, motion and a second. Any other comments? Roll call, vote, please.
Karski?
Hi.
Barth?
Hi.
Bennega?
Hi.
Heiburger?
Hi.
Bender?
Hi. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, DJ.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, so this takes us to item 16, which is to consider a motion to approve the 2020-2021 malt beverage and wine licensing renewal applications. Olivia?
So this is the renewal applications for all of our malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine licenses. These are the ones that we have not had any violations for, and they have submitted their applications on time with the appropriate fees. So they're coming before you for approval to send on to the state. And just for the purposes of the record, I'll read off those locations. It's American Legion Post 307, The Alibi Crooks Gun Club, Chasers Food and Spirits, Baltic Corner, Bottoms Up, Tucker's Walk Vineyard, Northern Links Golf Course, Uncle Ed's Specialty Meats, I-90 Speedway, Renner Corner, Hunter's Point Shooting Complex, the WH Land Fairgrounds, Buffalo Trading Post, Yogi Bear Campground, Wild Prairie Winery, State Line Casino, Straw Bale Winery, Ultimate Golf, Isaac Walton League, Emerald Pines, Wild Water West Water Park, A Homestead Brew, Great Life at Rocky Run Golf Course, Mighty Course and Art Players, and Pump &amp; Pack.
All right, questions for Olivia?
Ben Chair, Jeff Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
Olivia, what do they pay us for this renewal on an individual basis? What do each of these groups pay us for their license?
Right, so for renewals, it's $150 to the county and $150 to the state for malt beverages.
Thank you.
Other questions? Not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Barth?
Hi.
Bennega?
Hi.
Heiburger?
Hi.
Karski?
Hi.
Bender?
Hi. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Olivia. All right, this takes us to the next one, item 17, which is to consider a motion to approve insurance proceeds of $951,669.90 for loss and business interruption on the Community Corrections Center fire and authorize recording of these proceeds to the building fund. Long process. Carol Mueller and...
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Mueller, Commission Office. Yes, before you today is the request to approve this proceeds settlement and also to deposit those funds to the building fund. On September 16, 2018, the Community Corrections Center experienced a fire resulting in substantial damage to the facility. Of this, business interruption is $140,771.71. Includes loss of revenue for bed rentals, rentals of beds for other counties, for Minnehaha County inmates, and travel to and from those county jails. The statement of loss does reflect the payment of depreciation of just over $88,000 and the $25,000 deductible. Joining us today are Todd Flickema and Ryan Gebauer from the Silverstone Group, who can answer any questions. They've been great about investing a lot of time to get us here.
All right, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Todd Flickema. I'm just gonna make a couple of brief comments, and then I'm gonna turn over to my colleague, Ryan Gebauer. So we got the call about the fire on a Sunday. And typically, what we do is we get, you know, we get the claim reported to a carrier, and then we're advocates of our clients, you. And so at that time, I talked to Carol's office and said, keep us in the loop. We'll monitor it, and that's what they did. And partway into that, we got the feeling that this is gonna be a very complicated claim because we were moving people, we were building a building at the same time. And the initial dollars that we saw coming through, we just weren't sure that it made sense with the damage that was done and some things like that. And so we called Ryan in from our office to kind of quarterback that for us. And it took a long time because it was a complicated situation, a lot of moving parts. And insurance policy is simply an insurance contract. It's a legal contract. And so there's a lot of things to dissect out of that. And every claim has its own nuances. And so Ryan did a great job, and we're happy with the results of it. And so I'll let him make a few comments on that, and he can probably answer any particular questions as to how we arrived at the dollar amounts.
Thank you. Morning, Ryan.
Good morning. Good morning. It's kind of nice to come before you and say we're bringing you money. We're not asking for money. Really, I wanted to start just really first off by thanking the county's team because we had to reach out to resources and get things. And, hey, I need this mark or I need this. And just did a fantastic job getting us the information that we needed. So I think the biggest question last time we were here was the depreciation. Todd had an endorsement on the policy that said you could rebuild anywhere. Well, we all know we were rebuilding anywhere anyway. So what we really just had to do is show the dollars that were spent, and that's how we recaptured the depreciation. And one of the Commissioners last time called that out correctly, that, yes, we knew we'd have to get that. And then it was the partnership with Tegra, getting the correct documentation and getting the carrier to say, we accept it. So the depreciation was paid out 100%. The cost to the building really was the deductible of $25,000. The other category was the business interruption. And if you'd like me to, we can go line item through every detail. But what I think the significant part to understand is from what the county had expected and submitted, there was a little bit of a variance. And it really came to a great partnership with Travelers to recognize that there are some numbers that are never going to be hard numbers. For example, you know, the county did not complicate what a bed rental income loss was. We really didn't have to go through that exercise. But we knew that there was a loss. And one of the differences was the expense in housing. And generally, on a business interruption claim, a carrier will deduct anywheres between 20 and 25% of that expense to pay the utilities that you would have incurred anyway. They graciously, after a long conversation, and a conversation about how this took so long to get here, they graciously said, you know what, we'll pull back. We'll go to a 10%. And obviously, that puts more money in the county's hands, which is where I believed it should have been. So, long story short, when you look at the business income to what we calculated, to what Travelers calculated, it had an $8,200 difference. And the $8,200 difference was really justified on what Travelers did, which I expected it to be. A carrier is usually spot-on with business interruption because they use their team and they also use a third-party team. So at the end of the day, that adjustment was things like the spend for fuel. Is it inside the scope? Was it outside the scope? Were the costs calculated at the government rates? Or as well as wages paid beyond a recovery period, which is generally nine months? And so I didn't have any argument points with Travelers. I thought they treated us very fair. So with that, I think Todd rattled off, and everybody has the total calculations of the loss. And certainly want to open for any questions that I possibly can.
Questions? Commissioner Karski?
First of all, yeah, you did get the call on Sunday, but it wasn't this last Sunday. It was a little bit longer ago than that. It's been a long, long process. And I just, for one, want to thank you guys for your work. I mean, having the right insurance and the right people on it is extremely important. When the initial estimate came through, and I was out there on that Sunday afternoon while the fire department was out there and the place was still smoking, when I saw the initial estimate, it was easily a third of what I thought it should have been. So thank you for the work that you've... So thank you for the work that you've done in getting us to the right place. Much appreciated, and the citizens and taxpayers of this county are whole because of the work that you did. So, thank you.
Of course, thanks, sir.
Other questions or comments? Well, and I do appreciate all the work that you've done, and I appreciate that you called out the fact that there were a lot of county employees who spent a fair bit of time, as well as our consultant, Tegra, and Dick Strasberg was able to provide you a lot of documents about the existing structure that we're building. And so, just like any effort, it takes a lot of people involved, but you guys really quarterbacked it for us, and we really do appreciate the work and the willingness to go back and fight for the depreciation. And so, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Our privilege, really.
All right. If there aren't any other questions, I'd consider a motion.
I would move approval of the settlement.
Motion.
Second, Jeff.
So we had a motion?
There's a question.
Oh, excuse me.
Building Fund.
And Building Fund. Okay, so we need the motion to approve the proceeds and to deposit it in the building fund. Was that the motion?
That it was.
I thought so.
It was.
So the motion and the second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for coming this morning. We appreciate it. All right, so that takes us to item 18, which are Minnehaha County Liaison Reports. Commissioner Hiberger.
I have several, so if you will indulge me, I'll go through a list of them.
No, there might be somebody here to talk on mine. Do you mind if we give them an opportunity to visit? Michelle Boyd and Erin Serskow out there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Erin?
I'm going to just let them visit, so that they can go ahead and go. Thank you guys for being patient this morning. So Michelle and Erin agreed to come today to talk about another grant application that they have been working on with kind of a team. And I'm just going to go ahead and turn it over to you guys and let you describe what that is about. We want to make sure that the Commissioners were aware of it. The deadline for this application actually is next week, and so we don't have a commission meeting before that. But they will, unless they're, you know, feel negative feedback about it this morning, they'll likely go ahead and submit that next week, and it'll be presented for approval at our commission meeting the last week of May. And if it, for some reason, doesn't get approved, they could withdraw it at that point. So Erin, thank you for being here. It's good to see you. I haven't seen you in ages.
I know. I know. It's great to see everybody, but thank you for this opportunity to share today and to bring this up. There is, the grant that we're looking at, it's a BJA, so Bureau of Justice Administration COSAP, which really focuses on stimulant opioid and substance abuse for our community. It's an opportunity to bring up to $900,000 here to really focus on those pieces. Looking at the grant and our partners, the three main components that we are looking to focus on, one is working with our state's attorney's office and developing a diversion program for substance use, to try to bring in some of those resources that are normally, a lot of folks get those, these resources when they're in drug court, which is at the end of the process, and they're facing prison and a lot of different things. We're trying to, you know, provide a system and programs to have those resources early on. So diversion is one of them. The other, one another focus is temporary housing. So part of some folks leaving drug court doing exit surveys, folks utilizing some different services in need has brought up from participants is safe sober housing, just temporarily, as they look for sustainable and permanent housing. So we have some funding set aside for that temporary housing piece. We also have funding set aside for Peer Support Navigator. This position is something that has garnered a lot of attention over the past numerous years, as something that works really well. The whole model is having a peer, so P-E-E-R. Some of it has been through the system and through treatment, and on the other side, usually around two years at least of sobriety, that acts as a mentor and advocate, and sort of a pseudo-case manager to help folks that are going through this time. And it actually has produced really, really, really good outcomes, are some of the things that we want to focus on for this grant. Just to circle back around, what we're looking at, how to spending the dollars, is 30% of the allocation can be used for the housing component. For the county specifically, we're looking at the diversion officer to be housed in the state's attorney's office, because that's where diversion is done in our county, so that's one full-time FTE. We're looking at the sheriff's office as going to be the grantee of this grant, an oversight of this grant, so having, allowing the sheriff's office to do that. We have written in just a part-time case manager under Alliance. There might be an opportunity to have this case manager with another partner, but right now, and if it's, we are, actually, we're going to work some of that out this week, but even if we write it in as a part-time case manager here, there's still an opportunity, if we're awarded, to kind of change that. But Alliance has a lot of that case management, making sure people don't fall through the cracks. And if we're going to, you know, prop up some diversion and some housing, we want to make sure that folks are connected to that sustainability piece. And then, an idea that has been floating around, that has been talked about, another piece of the ask of the grant is to possibly utilize the old detox and sobering center space for this temporary housing solution. That space will be vacated, hopefully by the end of this year, when the triage center opens. So just looking during this transitional space to use it, just maybe as a pilot to see if this temporary housing solution works. So that would be one of the asks of the Minnehaha County. So that's some of the very global and some pieces that specifically are connected to Minnehaha County. We're working really closely with a team of partners, state's attorney has been involved, obviously the sheriff's office, USD with myself and my grant-writing team, writing the grant. And then we also have Sioux Falls Police Department involved, Avera Health for that Peer Support Navigator. I'm working with them, and they're open to it. They would be the recipient, they would be subcontracted to have that Peer Support Navigator as part of the triage center and house there. The courts are very, I'm trying to think of the partners, the courts are very, very supportive. Judge Robin Howman is very much looking forward to having these resources available for folks as they come in. And we're talking with other community providers to look and be partners in this. But just to remember that this is just approval to apply, and we have to get, if we get awarded, we'll be able to take, anything things change in the next few months, take a lens to make sure that it's still the way we want to have it implemented. If we're awarded, we would be able to start spending down the dollars this October. So we would know by the end of September, usually, for the grant to order if we're awarded for it.
Thank you. Are there questions? So they would have done kind of a more complete presentation, the scheduling of our commission meetings kind of has been a little of an obstacle, so that's why we're doing this a little bit unusually in addressing it during my liaison report. Commissioner Hiberger.
I have a comment, unless one of these other ladies want to speak.
Does anybody else here desperately want to speak?
Oh, desperately?
Yeah. Come on.
Definitely not desperately, but Michelle Boyd with the sheriff's office. One thing I just want to mention is, as you guys know, we've continually looked at the gaps that we have in our community. And one of the big gaps that we have are those people that are first, second-time offenders, drug offenders, you know, trying to get ahead of the game with those before they're at rock bottom, or like our specialty courts for drug court. You have to be on your way to the penitentiary before you get those services wrapped around you. And so being able to do this adult diversion in the state's attorney's office, much like they're doing juvenile diversion right now, just seems like a really good fit for our community. And then what we're trying to do in the triage center, law enforcement, a lot of times will say they don't have a lot of options of what to do with these people that they know need some services right now to try to kind of pull themselves back out before they're so deeply involved in the criminal justice system. So that's one of the reasons that we're excited as the sheriff's office to be a part of this grant. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll invite the state's attorney to, we appreciate you coming down. Thank you.
Crystal Johnson, state's attorney. Kind of piggybacking a little bit on what Michelle said, certainly one of the things that drives our crime rate in the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County is drug use. Drug and alcohol use are very, one of those factors that really carries us quite a bit. Ideally, with the diversion, this allows us to get involved and get involved early on. Sometimes going through the criminal justice system, by the time you get services, you're three, four months post-arrest, and by that time, we have people who have picked up three, four new additional possession of controlled substance cases. And so ideally, with the diversion and with the triage center, we're able to get them those services that they need early on, so our first-time offender doesn't become our lifetime offender that we're cycling in and out, and that we get to know on a first-name basis. And so I think the diversion coordinator, in conjunction with that triage center, is kind of a perfect timing type of storm, where we're able to ideally provide those services for those individuals early on, and hopefully preventing then those subsequent arrests. Any questions?
I have a question, but I'm not sure if it's you or Erin who might be the best person. So part of this grant, and we've done this before, had grant-funded positions, the state's attorney's offices had grant-funded positions, and, you know, I think a question that the Commissioners typically have in that situation is, are we, you know, once this grant goes away, are we committed to those positions? Are there, is there accountability for those positions, measurements that are built in about whether, you know, if, whether it's being effective and whether it will continue?
It's my understanding that it is a three-year grant. I think a three-year period of time on a diversion program is going to tell us whether it's successful or not. Ideally, if it's successful, it helps reduce our caseload, which then prevents us from needing new attorneys or having to hire new attorneys. Within three years, we're also going to know if it's unsuccessful, that it isn't worth our time and effort to continue the program. But I think a three-year period of time is a good baseline to see whether we're successful or not, because a lot of those cases, we're going to know in six months if we were successful or not. And if it's successful, ideally, it reduces our caseload within the office and then helps reduce some of those vandalism offenses, some of the things that our community routinely complains about, that we have issues, kind of those nuisance offenses, where it's maybe not a controlled substance, but it's controlled substance-related, because they used methamphetamine, and now they're passed out in front of a building, something like that, where I think this timeframe is an ideal timeframe for us to know whether it's a good, useful program. And if it's useful, I think then it is worth the effort of the commission to invest in it. And if it's not worth it, then I think at the end of those three years, we know that it wasn't worth it.
Thank you. Commissioner Hiberger.
Just a couple of comments. There were comments, so you're great. Just to let our audience know in this room that this was not something that just popped up all of a sudden. Michelle and the sheriff kind of let Jean and I in, we met on this probably January, February, and talked about this concept of having the housing model and stuff. And then also, when I was, it was put on my list of things to do, that when I was in NACO in March, I talked to the head, BJA, and told her we were interested in this grant. And it's to give our people accolades, because when I mentioned where I was from, she immediately said, wow, Minnehaha County, I know your people, you guys are doing amazing things. And so I just want to continue to reiterate that people across this nation know the stuff that Minnehaha County does, and that we rise to the top of people that are successful in our opportunities. And so just an accolade to you guys, too, and you've been working on this for a long time behind the scenes, it didn't just come up a week ago, so.
And to piggyback on that, and being involved with a lot of the MacArthur grants and the Safety and Justice grant that we've received, a lot of times when they come up with suggestions of things that we should do to implement in our community, we're ahead of the ballgame. We're kind of a pocket, a microcosm of the rest of the United States, and we're very forward-thinking for being a relatively small town in the middle of nowhere. And that's one of the things I've always been very impressed with, is that we are very forward-thinking, and we work very well as a team.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of times, too, there's a real negative perception about law enforcement and the state's attorney's office, and that you guys somehow are real excited about locking people up. And, you know, here, this is a, you know, a prime example of where, you know, the sheriff identified early that this grant might work for this situation, and that your team are looking at ways to intervene early and keep people out of the criminal justice system, that that is ultimately your goal, and to put lives back together and people, families back together. So we appreciate that leadership as well, so. Any other questions? Well, thank you guys for your time this morning. I know this was just a briefing, but I didn't, I don't hear anybody having any problems with this idea, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. All right, Commissioner Hiberger, back to you.
Okay, I have several liaison reports. The first one I'm going to bring up is, I sit on SDACC's president, but I also have worked for this commission on our legislative issues every year. This last, since legislative issues will be on the SDACC agenda at the convention in September, our deadline to submit legislative platform ideas for Minnehaha County is July 31st. So I reached out this last week to the city council and ended up talking to Jim David. We have met with them the last few years and discussed together as municipalities, not just the city of Sioux Falls, but Brandon and Del Rapids and some of the other ones, how we can work collaboratively together to bring legislative forward. So that will be, that meeting, Jim David from the city will be working on, talking with Craig and getting something set up for our next meeting in the next couple of weeks to get that ball rolling. I would also suggest that our department heads and our office look at what types of agenda or what types of legislative things we would like to possibly bring forward, and if we could maybe have an agenda item for our next meeting to discuss some of those things that gives people two weeks to think about what we might want to be bringing forward. And along with that, the SDACC is going to be having a call later this week to talk about what our fall convention might look like. It is scheduled for September. Right now, we do have a current reservation here in Sioux Falls. Hopefully, that convention will happen here in person in Sioux Falls, but that will be part of our discussion later this week. I'm liaison for the library, and just, I haven't given you any updates on the library, and just to let you know a couple of things. Currently, they're closed until May 18th, and at that time, they will start looking at partial openings. You can do a curbside pickup for holds, they implemented that recently, and that's been going very well, and they will have that at all rural libraries at some point. I don't think they're quite to curbside at all branches. And that, at this point, the library is looking at a flat budget for 2021, unless revenues look like they come in better than expected. So it's always good to hear that our property tax dollars are coming in, because that helps the library, too. I've talked a little bit with the 4-H department. They will remain closed until May 31st, and then I guess it's a wait and see if that continues to stay that. They have finished up their summer programming, or no, they're working on their summer programming with what types of possibilities they can be. Are we going to be face-to-face, or are they going to have to do virtual summer programming? So they're working on, they said, three different models and ways they could still meet with kids. They finished up with their chicks in the classroom, which Chuck had talked to us about when he gave us his overview, and he said they had 1,000 youth take part in that through virtual learning, which was quite successful. I did reach out to Children's Inn about a week ago and haven't heard back from them, but I do know that their numbers at Children's Inn have gone down with that people are coming in, and so I just wanted to have a face-to-face or not phone call talk with Amy Carter about some of the things that are going on with Children's Inn. And then I was on, I've been on several phone calls, but just one more to mention that I was, I sit on the state oversight mental illness board that oversees the House bill, I think it was 11, I wrote it down, 1158, or I think it was 1158, where they oversee the different bills on mental illness. This last legislative session, there were quite a few bills that dealt with legislative, that dealt with mental illness bills and how the South Dakota codified law works or is written, and all of those bills that were brought forward regarding mental illness were passed, and so they're working through some of those changes. There were two that they were very happy with COVID that had passed, and one was the ability used telehealth with mental illness. They said it has opened up huge possibilities where people's appointments would have been canceled, particularly in smaller communities, that they are actually able to get the mental health they need. And the other one was the statewide funding of 211. When you look at the situation like this, how important 211 has been in that, and that bill actually had a difficult time in the House, with 17 people in the House voting against funding 211, and now we're in this epidemic where this is one of the things that we said, we need a service like 211 statewide. So that is my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Karski.
For Commissioner Hiberger, one of the things that I've been talking a lot about and advocating for is public safety answering points. And I think that the State-County Association and the Municipal League Association really needs to request a legislative study on PSAPs. I think there's a lot of money that's being spent that could be more, because of economies of scale, done more efficiently, and it's going to take state legislative action. But I think we need to have a study- I think we need to have a study done so that we know what we're dealing with and how best to approach that whole Pandora's box of how do we fix the system?
That is a great suggestion, and I'll follow up with one more thing, and that was one of the things, our phone call yesterday, they were talking about summer studies, I don't, I didn't write down here what they were, but they said those have not even been assigned yet, just because of the, the COVID situation, the financial situation, that those summer studies for this summer have not even been assigned yet to legislatures, but that's a great one to put on our list, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Anything else? One thing that I would note is that budget, it's budget season, everybody's favorite time of the year, and I know I'm meeting with a couple of my liaisons in the next day or two to go over budgets, I'd, I'd recommend commissioners try to get ahold of their liaisons. Budgets are actually due on Friday, and Carol, I think, sent out last week some, the budget dates, so to make sure everybody gets those on their calendar for budget hearings. Okay? Anything else, liaison reports? All right, new business, any new business? Any old business? Oh, Commissioner Heiburger?
One old business, happy birthday, Commissioner.
That was nicely done. Old business, yes, thank you very much. Thank you. All right. I would entertain a motion to recess the Minnehaha County commission meeting.
Moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barre?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We will try to reconvene in about 25 minutes after 11:00. Give Tony a time to wrap up, and I think the Zoomers get to hang around with us, so you guys can go take a little break too. Thank you.